There we go. Your Honor. All right, start with the pledge and prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Pledge of allegiance, Lord God, and come to you with the humble hearts praying for this, this school district, all the employees, all those students, all the families. Lord God, may our decisions today be in benefit for them and glorify you, first in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The call is being ordered at six thirty PM on August fifth. Please note that the agenda was postponed in timely manner and there is a quorum present with two board members absent. First up, public comments. Next, review twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget and propose twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six property tax rate.
Mr. Van Deeg? Okay. I didn't change the outlines on some of these slides just so you wouldn't get tired of it, the same PowerPoint, time after time. A lot of things have changed, and yet not a lot has changed since I presented this on July the seventeenth. One big change, we got our certified values from the appraisal district. We had been told prior to that to allow forty thousand for every homestead to take effect with this new homestead exemption of one hundred and forty thousand. We have six hundred homesteads in the district, so forty thousand times six hundred was twenty-four million that we subtracted from our total values to get our avaloro taxes to figure the numbers we were using back in July. We got our certified values on July the twenty-fifth, and the average value of a homestead in our district is a hundred and ten thousand. So instead of being hit forty thousand per homestead, we were on average only hit ten thousand per homestead, which meant we gained eighteen million back in tax base when we got our certified values. So this number, I should have brought the comparison, but this number was like five seventy-five or so, I think in July, it's up to six thirteen. That additional money also allowed us to receive a little bit more in state money. And in just a minute, when we look at the INS, those numbers also improved our INS funding. Then I guess it was last week, we got a new template that actually increased our whole harmless funding for the INS. So our debt service fund, you're gonna see in just a moment, has improved over what we looked at three weeks ago. But nevertheless, now we're estimating revenue at seven million, one ninety-two. I haven't really kept up with it. I think Dr. Seeger says that's within a hundred thousand. I can't hardly believe it is. We've been all over the place, but...
Hundred, hundred twenty-five.
Okay, anyway, seven, seven million, one ninety-two. We put some things back in that we had taken out. Y'all approved last time, some alterations to some of the pay. So nevertheless, with that extra money, we're now budgeting seven million, seventy-six thousand in expenses, which is a hundred fifteen thousand debt operating positive, which, that's actually about thirty thousand more than what the positive budget was for this school year. And I think we're gonna fall well within that. We're gonna, we're gonna miss budget this year, both revenue and expenses, but we're gonna easily, I think, have eighty thousand in excess when we get to the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five year. But this is projected a hundred fifteen thousand in excess revenues. Basically, the payroll numbers changed, and I guess some of the supply numbers may have changed also, but we're still looking at about fifty-one percent. I cut the percentages off on this slide. Fifty-one percent in instructional cost and seventy, a little over seventy percent now in payroll, which seventy percent is kind of where our payroll has been. There are a lot of districts that that number's pushing eighty percent of their expenditures. So, and as you see in the number I presented to you earlier in the year, we, you know, we have trended maybe a little increase in staff. We've trimmed a few positions this year, particularly non, I think, non-teaching positions, and so we're seeing our numbers stay kind of, kind of down there where they need to be. Any, any questions on this?
And Tommy, I think we pulled it back up. Our last presentation on revenue and taxes was five seventy-five.
Five seventy-five, okay, yeah. So we're gaining about thirty-five to about thirty-eight thousand in tax revenue here based on that change in homestead valuations. And keep in mind, for the extra forty thousand, the election got to pass on November the second or third, whatever that day is, or it would go back to a hundred, but I can't believe it's not gonna pass. I mean, who, who wouldn't vote for an extra forty thousand in homestead exemption? So anyway, here's where we are. We still got these kind of numbers in there, eighty thousand for the retention payments, forty thousand for roof for this building. I left in the forty thousand for the classroom furniture. We had talked about taking that out. An extra hundred thousand for the technology to go in the new cafeteria, and that truly is kind of an above and beyond, but we're gonna eat it out of general fund instead of having to take it out of bond funds. By doing that, when we finally get to that point, the driveway can go a little further towards the back, the way it's gonna have to go. And of course, we've increased, we've added a pay step every year that I've been here, and so that step twenty-six increased now. We're six steps over the state base, adds about fifteen thousand a year to our, to our payroll. Any, anything more? Okay, I broke this down because I, the slide with the INS on it fills up the screen. This screen has not changed since what I presented in July. The change in state revenue, as far as the foundation program, the change in tax revenue does not affect what's, what's going on here. And so we're looking at, for this year, fifty-three thousand in local revenue. And by the way, these numbers, this is just about how much we're gonna miss our revenue numbers for this year. Fifty-three, that's supposed to sixty-five, three thousand in state. And there was some extra state money last year that was just, there was ten thousand dollars there that just kind of dropped in. The federal revenue, hundred, and that's the actual school lunch program, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, and we budgeted two oh three for this year, and we're not, not gonna hit that number. So as I've mentioned the last time, I am proposing that we put forty-seven thousand into food service out of the general fund just to make it balance out. It's operating at a deficit for this year, but there's enough fund balance there to cover this year's deficit. There's not gonna be enough to cover next year's. But keep in mind also, should the cafeteria exceed my expectations, and I'm sorry to have such dark expectations, but should it exceed that, and one thing that could help it is the lunch program that Dr. Seeger's gonna present to you here in just a little bit, where all of our kiddos can eat for free. But having said that, we've still got to get them through the line. We, you know, we almost need barcodes on their head, scan the barcodes when they go through so we can count them as a, as a meal. And no, I don't believe in communism like that, by the way. But anyway, we need the kids to go through the line so we can collect this money, because even if it's free, the state's not gonna pay us if we don't have the count going through the line. But it should pick this up a little bit. I say all that just to say, we'll put the forty-seven thousand in last. We won't put it in until we absolutely have to, because once it goes in there, we can't get it back. That's a one-way street for your money, from the general fund to the food service fund. So there's a chance we won't do that, there's a chance it won't take that much, you know, maybe it'll take a lesser amount. But I think to be prudent, we've got to budget that much because that's just what the numbers look like. Any questions on this sheet? Okay. Now here, this thing kind of blew up, I put all kinds of color on it. Here is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for interest and sinking. We did budget a ninety-two thousand deficit because we have extra money, or we had extra money in the debt service fund balance out of the bond election. The bond money, the folks who advised us on that knew we were gonna be short the first couple of years into it, because we would not get the state facility money until twenty-five, twenty-six. We got very little, you can see the difference right here. We budgeted thirty-one thousand, now we're budgeting a hundred and sixty-one thousand, even a hundred and seventy-five thousand if we adopt the tax increase. But anyway, we operate at a deficit by, by plan. With estimated values that we looked at three weeks ago, these numbers because of the, really a lot because of the tax issue there, that twenty-four million that we lost in, in tax base, we were gonna need eighty-three thousand out of the general fund to be able to pay our debts and not just break that account. And so it was gonna take some money over there. Now, since we got the certified values, these numbers, just like everything else, they've gone all over the place. But if we don't do a tax increase, which I think that's not what's the recommendation, but anyway, if we don't do a tax increase, here's what we're gonna be looking at, two seventeen in tax, still the same one sixty-one in state money, which is both the whole harmless and the facilities. If we do that, we still need fifty-two thousand out of the general fund, better than eighty-three, but it's still fifty-two thousand that we're gonna need. Come over here, if we increase the tax rate four point four nine cents, and by the way, I shared with Dr. Seeger's, I got new information from the appraisal district at about six o'clock tonight, we can't increase it quite that much. It's gonna have to be four point four five tax increase is the maximum. But these numbers are, I mean, you know, four one-hundredths of a penny is not going to affect us very much. We'd be looking at increased tax revenue from two seventeen to two fifty-five by more of our efforts, the state money increases by fourteen thousand. We wouldn't have to transfer anything from the general fund, we can still service our debt and have about four hundred dollars excess for the year if all these numbers hold. Any discussion of that? I think you've had some of these numbers maybe for a few days.
So Tommy, the maximum rate on the INS side is point zero four four five?
That's the increase.
Increase.
The maximum rate is gonna be point three oh four eight. We recommended point three oh five two, but we can't do that, can't go about that high.
That's a number we had talked earlier, but that's, I mean, the fluidity of it.
So when you, when you make the motion in a little bit to set the meeting date and propose the tax rate, instead of proposing three oh five two, which I guess is in your package, you need to propose three oh four eight as the INS tax rate. Any thoughts on? If it changes tomorrow, we've just already done it.
What'd you say that proposed rate was on?
Three oh four eight.
Three?
That's the INS. Now, the M and O rate is gonna roll back a little bit, point seven four eight one is the M and O rate that we need to propose.
What's the difference in those two?
Well, last year's total was one point oh one five five, this year's one point oh five two nine now. So it's gonna be four, about four cents. I did know the number, but we've moved things so much now, I don't have it by hand. But it'd be about a, about a four cent. Well, actually, three...
A little less than four.
Three point eight, just a little less than four, three point eight cents increase. I don't, what did you get that on the screen back there?
Just touch it somewhere, it should. No, just touch the screen, it shouldn't go away. You just touch it, it shouldn't go away.
No?
Tommy, you're getting, you're getting in some food now.
I have problems operating this thing from time to time. Okay, anyway, you can see in the shadows even here, now it can be accused of adopting a tax rate in the shadows. But anyway, this is, this will be the proposed rate, except we'll have three oh four eight right here when we propose it. You can see the local revenue per student goes up primarily because of the INS collections. State revenue per student increasing about two thousand a head. Hope to that state money. Two thousand a head, and we have two hundred more. How many students we got?
About five.
How many students?
Four twenty.
This is based on four oh seven. That's what we got for red, I believe it's coming back.
Well, that's our ADA off last year. And so, because you know, we're, we're at four, we're at four twenty-seven in enrollment, and ADA is a compression of the average of the time that they're here, so it compressed the four oh seven. So we ran budgets off last year's ADA.
So we're, we're sure, we got a shortfall of fifty-three thousand dollars to be able to pay our debt, so therefore we're gonna raise the tax to make up for it.
Yes, if you leave the tax rate at two six oh three, you'll have a fifty thousand dollar plus shortfall.
This year.
That you'll have to fund out of the general fund.
Next year if we were.
Raise it, that four cents.
How close are we on paying off some of that debt?
We have about, the debt service is not gonna change substantially. There's either two years or three years left on the twenty-twenty bonds where they were renewed, resold. It's either two or three years, but the debt service on the new bonds is structured such that it gets high octane when those are paid off.
Basically, no change on one of them.
So our, so our total debt service stayed fairly flat, but just getting those paid off is not gonna help us. It's just, well, I guess it'll let us pay more on the...
Well, I was saying, it wouldn't make any sense if it's just gonna accelerate the elements.
Yeah. Any, anything else? Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Are you fine, Tommy?
We need to do something.
No, it's okay. Not hurt anything? So, any questions on that, Mr. President? As far as the reasoning behind or anything?
No, it totally makes sense.
So as clarified, our proposal is that we set the maintenance and operation at point seven four eight one zero.
We need to do the motion on that or just the idea?
Well, I have to make the recommendation.
Oh, okay. The motion's gonna be on INS.
Yeah. And then adjusting the current number to point zero three oh four eight, correct, Tommy?
Point three.
Point three, excuse me, point three.
One three zero three.
Wrong part of the glasses, I'm sorry.
And then the M and O, I didn't hear what you said, but it should be point seven four eight one.
Does that make it a dollar five twenty-nine?
Yes.
That's what I came up with.
But do we need to do the motion on both or just the INS? That's what we're changing. Is the motion gonna be just on the INS change or both?
Well, you've got to, you've gotta have a motion on both.
Okay.
The board has to set the tax rate every year.
All right, what was the total?
Point seven four eight one.
Oh, I got that, the total.
And the total's one point oh five two nine.
Okay, got you. We'll have him get back here.
So while we got a commercial, I do wanna give a plug for Mr. Van Deeg. There's nothing as aggravating as a spreadsheet that gives different numbers on a, on a daily basis, and so, and it's not that he's changed anything, it's just we've got different values that have entered into it, and so, and we don't, and we still expect there to be some more changes if the legislature gets back in session. And so, but I do feel like, and Tommy feels the same, that this puts us in a spot that has the best interest of Maud in mind and makes sure that we can fund both our maintenance and our INS side and continue to operate in the black and not look in a deficit budget on either side. Good job, Tommy, appreciate you.
Better do it, double that next year.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot easier to swallow this way. And we know next year, probably tries to go up again, know that. Yeah, it slowed down yet. If you want to, we could... I think we could move on down and come back to five.
Work back to?
Yeah, yeah.
Moving on. Item six, consider, consider possible approval of the Maud I S D Food Service Department account.
Charging policy.
Oh, charging policy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic year. Sorry.
Well, you know, in the past, we've allowed students to charge, but with our new program that's out this year, with all of our kids being eligible for a free breakfast and a free lunch, it's the recommendation of the Food Service Department and myself that we not allow charging. And what that does, one, it keeps us from having a deficit, because right now we do have some charges left over from last year that we're still trying to collect money on. Now, kids can still have money added to their accounts, you can still put money on your kid's account, you know, a hundred dollars, whatever, and they do a la carte, all that stuff there, they just can't charge. So when they run out, they run out. And so they have money, they can buy, you know, but it just, it keeps, it keeps from having a, a negative balance ever this whole academic year with our kids and our families. Again, I think we're in a great spot since we're able to provide lunches and breakfasts for our kids. There's no reason to have a deficit on the table at all.
Well, they've never been able to really allow to charge a la carte anyway. That's the only thing they've left, I think, because they take the pay for it.
Yes, sir. And so I did make a couple, a little change to the item that was sent in the work book, and it was just a clerical clarification, and it's in the second line, I'll read it to you, it says a reimbursable meal requires two to two. Choose at least three items of breakfast, including the juice of fruit, and three of the food components for lunch, one of which must be a fruit or vegetable. So just to clarify that piece right there.
Yeah, I want to have breakfast.
Yes, sir. And so that way, it's just a little more spelled out and clear for all our families, because if, if they don't get all the reimbursement, all the requirements of it, it's an a la carte, and at that point, it would charge the families. So we gotta make sure that that's understood there on the, on the charging policy, but also, Captain R. Stapp does, does do a great job of making sure, hey, you gotta put this item on your plate, or you got this or this item, you gotta choose one of them.
Or you order.
So they'll give it to you, buddy.
They'll share it, I think.
Yeah. That's our recommendation on the Food Service Department charging policy for this year.
I think it's great that Rusty's gonna reimburse all the taxes.
There we go. Hey, I did. Got some good data.
Good. All right, we have a motion to approve the Maud I S D Food Service Department account charging policy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic year.
You're here.
Motion by Rusty. I have a second?
I got it.
Second by Josh. All in favor, raise your right hand. Hit your numbers. All right, we're gonna move back up to item five. Nope, item four, yeah.
No.
No, it's item five. Yeah. Item five. Move back to four. Yes, Mr. Brayley was right. My apologies. Do we have a motion?
No.
Thought we had to.
Four, four is just to review what Tommy did.
Right.
Five is where we set the date and set the proposal.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were.
I thought you said four.
No, I said five. So we're gonna go back to five, and they started holding forward.
Four says propose the tax rate.
No.
Yeah.
No, that's not what mine says.
Mine don't either.
Says review.
Four says review. Review budget proposed twenty-five property tax rate. Item five says set date, propose meeting to discuss the budget and, and the property tax rate. I don't care. Miss Six won't have a dozen others.
We've always set the tax rate.
Yeah, we are, we are in item five.
We've always set the tax rate and then set the date.
Yeah, you got to do that. You can't, you can't set a date before.
In two motions. Do, do what you want to.
No, I'm with you.
I'm not supposed to be involved in this.
You're not, what are you talking about?
It says to review the budget and propose the tax rate. Get to number four.
Terry, what are you suggesting there?
He made a point.
He did make a point. You gotta have a rate before you send me.
Yeah, but, okay. We just need to scratch the, the second part of item five.
Yeah. I'm with you now.
We got, we got.
We got you now.
We understand what you're talking about.
We're setting a date.
No, we're setting the tax rate first, item four. So now we're gonna have a motion, a motion to set the proposed twenty twenty-five tax property, property tax rate with the M and O rate of point seven four eight one and the INS rate of point three oh four eight totaling a total of one point oh five two nine. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Terry, second by Rusty, all in favor? Hit your numbers. All right, item five, set a date for the pub meeting to discuss the twenty twenty-five budget and the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed tax rate.
And that is August the twenty-sixth, correct? That we have for paper?
You and I were reading it one way.
Yeah, we was interpreting it.
Yeah, it makes sense now.
Yeah.
Sorry, Tommy.
What'd you say, though?
August the twenty-sixth, six thirty PM.
August twenty-sixth, six thirty PM. We don't need a motion. We need a motion to that?
Yep.
All right. We have a motion to set the date for the public meeting to discuss the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed tax rate for August the twenty-sixth at six thirty PM. Motion by Tim. Second by Rusty, all in favor?
Feel free to come in any time, Josh.
All right, item seven, discussion revisions to the student handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
All right, Lord.
Let me, uh...
Did you read the whole handbook?
That's the one of the times I didn't read the whole handbook.
What would you change? I can, I can, I'll give you the, I can go page by page where I can give you the five.
No.
Okay. So the student handbooks, the, the big changes over last year, as far as the human sexuality training, that's something that you have to opt into, and so, you know, it was opt out, it's, it's opt-in now, so you have to have parent consent, that's a big piece right there, and that's out of Senate Bill twelve. With compulsory attendance later on in the handbook, there's some exceptions to that, so there, if a child goes into a mental health, that is now exception, you know, exception to attendance, because they're being cared for in a mental institution. And then serious life illness, and both of those really is kind of odd because we've always worked with families in that piece, but now it's just part of a statute, so that's, that's a changer. But one that came in this year that I do wanna say is, there is an opportunity for once a week for students to attend a religious affiliation, and it's not counted against them. So that's a...
But just one?
Once a week. And during the school day, so it's, it's, it's a little different, but, okay, so it's not a big, not a major, I don't, for... So it's, it's, it's a little different, but, okay, so it's not a big, not a major, I don't foresee a major change for us or anything. All of our congregations tend to go on Wednesday night and Sunday, so. There are some updates to the F and G as far as complaints and grievances. One thing, it kind of expedits parents in the process area. You know, usually you go into it, you got your 15 day and you review that and you get the 10. It does expedite that somewhat. Also make sure the districts have that on the website. So that's not a huge change, but, you know, there is some nuances there. The big piece says, on the hand, on the table for everything, you've heard cell phones. And so, that's, that's the one that we're not allowed during the school day. And we're interpreting the school day as 7:45 to 3:25 each day.
And Apple Watches are part of that?
Yes, sir. And so, now, you know, I've been asked, how are we gonna approve that? I'll be honest, I don't know with one watch for another watch half the time. As long as we're not sitting there tapping on it, I think we're gonna be okay. You know, it's, it's a use that piece and I have to, have to look at it. But, uh, you know, uh, and the one thing that changed this year too is in the past, we've been able to charge fifteen dollars when the phone's confiscated. That was taken out this year. So we can still collect the phone, we can still keep it. And we, we, we can ask the parent to come pick it up, but we can't collect fifteen dollars on it. So that is, that is a change this year. Districts may offer remote instruction. You know, after COVID, you know, we went back to just online, I mean, all face-to-face stuff. But now, the state is allowing districts to start offering remote instruction. And so, that's something that we're gonna, we're gonna do some digging into and look into it. Might be some opportunities for us down the road, but, uh, no change for this academic year for us.
Everybody go home and remote instruction.
Well, or you can gain attendance too. And so, you know.
Right here, there at home.
There's a, there's a.
Came up to lunch line?
We don't have to supply the internet or the computer, or will we have to supply those two things?
Typically, the students have to supply those pieces.
Because COVID, they kind of.
Yeah.
You know, work.
Yeah. And so, that's, that's where pieces we're gonna work through. You know what I'm saying? I don't wanna jump into something that's just now getting pushed out. You know, I wanna kind of see the nuances of it.
But you're saying it is in.
It's, it's, it's an effect. It's, now, we're not doing it. You know, we're not, we're not using that platform this year. But it is something that we can look into, you know what I'm saying, for down the road. And so, um, we'll see. And I, and I think honestly, I heard, I heard a superintendent this last week say, you know, you may be a public school, but you're really a public school of choice now. You know, and so.
So would the state have any extra funding for some cases like that?
Uh, I, I think it's just that student ADA, you know, that, that comes for every kid. So that's where you could gain some, you know, if you picked up some kids that were, uh, virtual. It, it could help your.
Which allows them to play in academic functions.
That's a choice we have to look at too. So, because they wouldn't be a Maud's either at that point. And so. There's a, I said, there's, for every, for every, what looks like an easy answer, there's two or three questions that you gotta come back and look at, so.
Do they have to live in the district?
That's another question at that point, because you're, you have multiple pieces to this.
One, one statement, cause not many questions.
And that's why we're not trying to jump into it this year. You know, I've, there's a, I know a, a school district in South Texas that had a real shortfall with the state on, on their I and S. And so, not in a shortfall, but they were property wealthy. So, you know, they might send a big dollar in back. So they really went gun to, and went all out for a virtual school, basically made up that, that difference. Now, they had a lot of headaches too, that because of that. Because, you know, again, for every answer that looks good, like you, you see it in our short conversation, there's three or four, it's like, I don't know, I don't know about that dog. You know, and so, there's, there's some things that's good. For every good, there's, there's a comment, you know. So we gotta look to that way and see what's best for Maud and Maud kids. And what we can actually support too. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of pieces to that. So just letting you know that's coming. Districts may offer remote instruction and, uh, not, I screwed up. There's another piece I'll talk about in the student code of conduct with that piece. And then parent access to library. That was a piece that came out of this, we'll probably hear some more. I know we'll hear some more as the Tasby pieces come out. Have we said all along, if our parents wanna come see our library, come see it. You know, we don't, we don't feel like there's anything in there that's controversial or something that's inappropriate to kids. And obviously, I think we're extremely conservative and don't want that in our library, you know. But a lot of these came out of what happened a couple of years ago in Austin, places around there that were, were very big. So that's, other than that, rest of the handbook pretty much stayed the same as last year. Not a need for the board to vote on that one, just updates to it. And it's a, it's already ready to go out. So we'll post it out tomorrow on the web. We wanted to make sure we had it for y'all beforehand.
All right.
Next one.
Item eight, consider and adopt the student code of conduct for the, should that be 2025-26 academic year.
I had to do some of this, this, this time. So forgive me for some of my type moves. All right, our student code of conduct, uh, the big changes with it, again, cell phones is the one we've talked about. No longer are kids allowed to use it during the school day. Second piece that's a change this year as well is a formal remover, removal by teacher has gotten much easier. And so, in the past, you know, a teacher could do formal removal, but it usually took some time. They can act, actually ask a formal removal now of one incident. And so, and there's some pieces that have to jump through to put that kid back in class. And so, uh, basically some issues that happen around the state. And the states wanna make sure our teachers feel like they are supported. And they've made legislation to do so. And so, I do feel like our administrators do a good job supporting our teachers. And I don't expect anything there, but at the same time, it is something that we, that's, that's, that's out there now. So we have to look at that piece. There's no, no term limits for I, or no time limits for ISS. And I'm gonna say except when you live in the spectrum. And so, there, there's still, you still have your 10 days of, of removal without having to order for change of placement. So that, that piece hasn't changed. But as far as ISS, Texas is the world, uh, we can have, we could assign for long times. And I think it's 60 days you have to review them. Again, you can keep assigned if you want to. So it's not a good assignment for kids to go with long periods of time because they're not in the real classroom with the teacher. But that is an option there. Again, I think it's the state's reaction to try to make sure student discipline is taken care of, so. Vapes, this year, the state did draw back on the mandatory D A E P for the first time of possession of a vape. So we can, if you don't do D A E P, you can do 10 days ISS for the first time. And that's our choice as a district. We, we chose to do 10 days ISS for possession. And if they have a second time, it'd be 24, the next time be 45. And so, that falls right back in the line what we had last year. But that's, that's possession. There is some sticky point with that, and I didn't catch it, I didn't see it last year, and I asked Ms. Harold, and she said, she said, she didn't. But if you're providing a vape to somebody, so if I'm giving one to RJ, I'm not possessing at that point, I'm distributing. And that's a mandatory placement. So that, they did, they push that one just like they would be if you were doing illegal drugs. So if you're selling, giving, providing, and the statute's really designed because they're worried about small kids. You know, smaller children getting access to vapes. It's the same thing as if you're doing something with illegal drugs.
Do we, do we go over the student handbook? And each kid is explaining exactly.
Yes, sir. Caleb and.
To.
They take, they take the, these parts right here, actually run through these things with them.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Sir?
Those are told.
Yeah. Well, and like I said, we wanna make sure they know the rules.
Yeah.
And so, hopefully, if they know, they'll make wise choices, and that's the whole problem. I, I just highlighted superintendent is the person in charge of expulsion hearings. Uh, y'all get the second if someone wants to appeal it. And so, that's just something that we changed last year, but I wanted to let you know we kept it that way. Sir?
Hallelujah.
The, uh, we can also virtually expel students now, in, in the need of that being a, a case. Uh, that's really if there's not a D A E P or J J E P around, or if it's, can't handle the kid. And so, there's, there's that option there. It's, I would think it'd be a rare occasion that you would do something like that because you're looking at a lot of issues, because you're still trying to continue education at that point. But there is an option that's out there now.
It's an option.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, that's pretty much the main points of the student code of conduct.
Can you briefly go over, until we all know the consequences about when they get called to phones out? Was there something on that that, what are, what we're gonna, what we have to do by the state?
I think it. Well, we get to set that piece. It is as disciplinary consequences. And so, but Caleb does have something on that.
The state handed down a lot of stuff.
They said no fines. They didn't say, they didn't give them consequences. And so.
I just curious just what, what our standards are gonna be on that. You're gonna get to that, I forgot. Well, I, I still mean, I, I think the expectations are gonna start at 7:45 in the morning.
So basically, we're gonna treat that like it's any other disciplinary infraction. And so, the first time is a warning. You're gonna pick your three phone, at the end of the day, bomb deck, go pick it up. That's, that's pretty much what we did initially, hadn't changed anything. Next time, we'll be on a date of attention, you know. And it's, this is just our steps, you know. When you've had one, one offense, your next offense is gonna be attention. Your offense after that, three days attention, five days attention. Day of ISS, two days ISS, three days ISS. And so, out of school suspension, two days, three days, you know, it, it, and again, it grows, you know, because we're looking at trying to curb behavior, you know what I'm saying? Now, if you get into a fight, obviously, that's, you may not get attention because that's more egregious than, you know, a minor infraction. But that's, that's the steps that it works through, and we're working it just like we would a regular disciplinary infraction. And Kayla has, that's one, that's one of the metrics that she works off of.
Perfect.
And so, helps me. Yes, sir. So it's, again, it's, we're not trying to create havoc here around this piece where, you know, it is. We're not, not wanting to use.
Use those standards.
Yeah. But we're, but at the same time, got a lot of things I need my principals doing besides chasing cell phones.
Absolutely. So if y'all made a policy of what they're gonna do with them?
We're gonna put them in their, put them, elementary's gonna leave them in their backpack. And secondary's gonna put them in their pockets, just like they did last year.
Okay.
So, it worked well, you know.
They just gotta know they can't have them in hallways?
Hallways and at lunch and recess. That's really the only, that's really the only change to this thing for us. Because elementary, they never had theirs last year, they left them in their backpacks. And then over here, you know, they did have them at lunch and recess and hallways. That's where they, you know, caught up on everything.
I wonder what these kids gonna do, the whole way they communicate.
That may be their whole goal in this, that may be nice.
And so, I'm hoping that we'll have more talking at lunch.
We had to actually ask a girl to.
As rowdy as we were in the last.
That's what I'm talking about.
Gave us cell phones.
We're gonna get the jukebox back in there.
Any other questions on the student code of conduct for the 25-26 academic year? Excuse me? We do need to.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the student code of conduct for the 2025-2026 academic year. Motion by Terry.
Second.
Second by Josh. All in favor? Item nine, consider and possible approval of employee handbook for the 2025-2026 academic year.
Okay, board. One point of order, and I did chump check with Tasby, we don't have to adopt the employee handbook. It can be just like the student one. And I put that in there just to make, just in case we had to. But we don't have to adopt that, but it's just, it's more of a presentation. And so, which, in the words of Tasby, says, "Give you a chance to make changes during the year and not have to come back to the board for approval." So you just update the, update all, all the entities and move forward. So, however, if we do choose to do it, it's just, if we change it, we gotta come back to the board.
There's no action on that?
There doesn't have to be action on that.
So you're saying they're following the same rules as the kids?
No, it's a little different to read it. So, for, for the most part, uh, hopefully, it's a little higher standard on most things.
Yeah.
And so, so in the employee handbook, the, the changes that are this year, one of the things is, y'all probably heard about this already, where we've been 72 hours on posting for board meetings, now it's three business days. So, you know, if we have a Thursday board meeting, we have to have that posted Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Yeah, Monday afternoon, which is not hard for us. Now, if we have a Tuesday, we gotta have it posted on Friday, Thursday evening at the latest, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. So it's just a little change there, uh, but I don't, I don't foresee a major piece in that. For staff, there's some extra provisions on ADA accommodations, you know, if they have problems with health or different pieces in there, just trying to, again, trying to be compassionate, do everything we can to support our employees and make sure they're afforded everything they need to, to be successful. Big change for administrators, outside employment with entities that do business with the school is prohibited. And so, you know, that's where you've seen a lot of superintendents do extra gigs with, you know, maybe a roofing company or, you know, different software programs, stuff like that, even, even administrators. Now, if you're, you can't do that anymore. And so, uh, I think the, I think the intention behind that is to make sure there's no unfair contract or something like that coming back. And so, you know, that's, that's a, that's a big no-no now. So, really, I think probably a lot of it comes from interim superintendents, you know, they've already retired, and they're moonlighting for, you know, hey, that's a great gig, you know, I can work for a certain, certain company. And, you know, when I get a new job, I can, I can roll in there and recommend these things. You can't do that now. So that, that's a big change. Mental health training for staff, that we talked about this last year, this year it is a requirement. Edge of Hero has just about completed all their, their modules. We'll give that to our staff to work on this year. It's a very intense, probably about a multi-hour training. About a day when it's all said and done when you do it. So we're gonna give them plenty of time to do that, but it is a, some mental health training that they have to take care of this year, which is, you know, taking care of the kids. Reporting child abuse, used to it was a 48-hour requirement, now it's 24. And, uh, it is a compulsory to report to T E A. And so, especially on the superintendent side. So if there's something, you know, you get word of something, we got 24 hours to turn it over to CPS and Sheriff's Department. I think that behind that, there's been a lot of cases happen that, uh, something may have happened with a kid, somebody left, district or whatever, and they just kind of stopped, didn't do anything else with it. It's got to go to the Sheriff's Department and T E A and CPS. You know, those are the things that we gotta do. Sir? Yeah, it is law paperwork. And so, uh, but in the, in the intent of the law, it is to take care of kids, you know. Criminal background checks on all employees, we've always done that, it does require that, but, you know, that is a, that's a piece that's in this one as well. Uh, and then any Title V offenses requires discharge of an employee. That would probably have happened anyway, but that's just in statute now. So those are some major updates there, major changes in employee handbook. Other than that, pretty similar to last year.
So we could move on down?
We could move on.
Item 10, consider and possible approval of local policy FM local.
All right, um, this one, board. Do I need to put that one up? Or did you get a chance to? FM local really looks at our, two things. Our allotted absences for, our allotted, allotted excused absences for kids. And like, up till, up till this point, and even now, it's been 12 absences in a year. And so, however, we have kids that are involved in every sport and every activity, and they routinely go over 12 absences. And so, um, when I was in another district, I had the state vice president in FFA, so he was out every time there was something going on in state. And he played baseball, he played football, he played basketball. So he, he had about 45 absences that school year. Still maintained was the plutatorian and all those things. So it's, it's the, the recommendation that we're bringing to you is that FM local has no limit to the extent, the days for kids there, as long as they're passing, you know, just let them, let them go. Because obviously, these kids are taking care of their grades because they wanna make sure they're passing, so they wouldn't participate. So that's kind of a, a good point right there. And then the other piece of it is, in our current setting, we have, uh, one, one clause that says we, you know, we have exemptions for, um, basically dual credits, higher, 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 higher classes than normal. And so, it's like, if you take a college mathematics or a dual credit, English, and you fail, And so it's like if you take a college mathematics or a dual credit, English, and you fail, we exempt you so that you continue to participate and, you know, keep rocking on, doesn't hurt you. What's catching us on this and according to our attorneys at Tazby is we also in that exempt our ad classes and anything anything that's college credit, but that doesn't align with state statute. State statute says it has to be within the four quarters, psychology, second English, second language, those are the only provisions right there. And so it just prevents us from having any liability if someone ever tried to challenge our policy because we wouldn't be able to stand them. So it's a recommendation that we update FM local to the recommended version, puts us in line with everything keeps us in a state that we can defend easily.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the local policy FM local to the recommended version? Motion by Terry. Second by Rusty, all in favor. All right, consider and possible approval memorandum of understanding, M O U, with the city of Maude first responders during the twenty-twenty-five football season.
All right, team, we do this each year and we typically pay the fire department two hundred dollars a game to be there as a first responder for us. Being able to get ambulance service is almost impossible in Texas when you're out in rural areas. I just play sure that we have one communication with Texas County and we have a team out there that is trained in first aid. And so the only change to this is there's eleven home games this year, so that would increase us to twenty-two hundred instead of the two thousand that we've had in the last several years. That's my recommendation.
Does that come out of gate money or?
Comes out of local budget. We we do good out of gate. I guess by the time we collect gate, we're hoping we cover referee costs, really.
Usually we don't. But that's what we're hoping for. It does offset, it does offset.
It does help, yeah.
Yeah, the the booty gang would usually pay the rest. I think there've been years that we didn't pay the rest before the booty gang, maybe. All right, do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the city of Maude first responders during the twenty-twenty-five football season?
Make your motion.
Motion by Tim. Second by Rusty, all in favor. All right, item twelve, consider and possible approval of Maude I S D meal prices for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
First president, I have not received anything of that. I'd say we just.
It's going to be on our adult prices and not our kids. And so this is what goes for adults. Have you seen anything, Tommy?
So I was I would recommend we just table that.
What was it, four and a quarter last year? Does that sound right? Five?
There's two, how many days in a school year?
Hundred hundred eighty-seven, one hundred eighty-two, seventy-six, I guess, for us. I fired up.
Times five, I think. It's less than a thousand dollars a year, I think.
But we don't get credit for the teacher.
I'm thinking after I retire, I'm going to earn even five bucks. That's better than something like that.
All right.
All right, on item twelve, we have a motion to table the possible approval of the M I S D meal prices for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion by Tim, second by Josh, all in favor, is tabled. All right, consider and possible approval to update a contract for the Central Booty County Special Education Shared Services Arrangement.
Okay, word, this is really the contract that came out of the Walsh Gallegos, we approved about a month ago. In it, it just lists the chart, the way we'll actually fund the co-op. It's it's based off the percentage of students that are actually in the S S A. For argument's sake, typically Maude's had about forty percent of the kids, so we fund about forty percent of the S S A on that. Redwater has approximately sixty percent. Now, if that number ever flipped, you know, we would be the the higher funder at that point, but it's just it's based on the number of of students in the S S A. It also outlines the charges with the the co-op of thirty thousand a year, which we presented in the last time, and the one thousand dollars and the basically office expenses there that they put into it. So it just puts that piece in there. I when I visited RJ, I did want to make sure it's clear, you know, last time we brought this to the board, it was a recommendation that we left it with the board for making changes to the co-op, to the check, to the to the contract. And again, not that it's not that I'm going to lead you astray, but, you know, we do have a rather healthy investment in that program. And I'd like to make sure that we keep it to where the final authority is with the board here and not with the superintendent. One, it makes me, you know, bring everything to you correctly, but at the same time, it gives you full rights to the bottom line there. And so that's why that's my recommendation, that we keep it that way. And so other than that, nothing spectacular difference in there as far as the Yeah, it's our it's our kids we deal with, you know? If there's some, like, for instance, we have some, it does talk about cameras in there. If someone asks for cameras to be in a classroom, we we split those equally. And, you know, right now, there's a Redwater request for cameras. We're split we split that equally last year, but if it comes up with a Maude request, I'd rather split that equally with them and fund it fully and it's in a Redwater classroom, if that makes sense. And so just I think it's probably the most equitable that we can come up with there. If it's a if it's a singular something, you know, like last year, Redwater had some things that were specific to Redwater kids. Doesn't mean Maude kids are going to participate in that. You know, we we split that piece right there. And if we have anything that's just a singular item, that's just out of the blue, you know, out of the ordinary as far as the normal operation of co-op, it falls back to the entity that that kid belongs to. So if it's a Redwater kid and it's a crazy number, crazy something, it's a Redwater expense. If it's a Maude, it's a Maude expense. So it just to kind of protect each one of us that way. All the employees in the co-op fall under the Redwater as far as who they who they belong to. And same light, if there's any grievances there, it falls under Redwater, the board to hear those. And so anything that would involve Maude and Maude employees would come back to this board. And so I think it's pretty straightforward continuation of what we have. And so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those. You good? Recommendation that we approve the contract as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the contract? The Central Booty County Special Education Shared Services Agreement, Services Arrangement as presented? Motion by Terry. Second by Rusty, all in favor. Superintendent's report.
All right, you can see our capitorium is moving along quickly. They're still on pace despite the twenty-some odd days of rain that we've had. We'll have bricks delivered tomorrow for the bottom pieces of it. Don't foresee anything major happening there, we'll be in class that time. Do believe the sheeting is supposed to start here in the next few days, so we'll see that piece. And the last time, I thought sheeting the roof was going to be by the end of the month, so I guess that piece is off just a little bit. So but I do expect the roofing to start here real quick as well. We'll have a meeting on Thursday, looking at updates and where they are, progress. But all in all, as far as the total project and timelines, they're they're right on track. And so they're set to the the timeline's on it is the middle of July, finishing up. So if they get a little earlier than that, that's just gravy. I have been visiting Robert Gedwall on the Driveloop project, just to update on that. We got a got that pushed into the architects. When I get Ms. Holly back, we're going to pull up and make sure we got our share of contracts for the architects on the Driveloop piece. Since we pulled it in, it does change some some scope pieces there, but for the cost of it of changes, it's I think it's well worth it because we're saving some substantial money on what it was originally drawn to. And so it does look like there's a real shot that we could have a stuff for y'all the next board meeting in August. We're getting ready to pull the trigger on that one right there. And potential timelines of finishing it up by the by the same time as the cafeteria. So that'd be starting next school year. And then we've gone through the the Van Hall piece, made some recommendations on that, it's been pushed off the architects to make some mockups of it and come back to us. So expecting, you know, we're we're our timelines are a little slower on that one because we got to first complete the cafeteria. And then we're looking at that one, some mockups on the it. Have some pieces back to us here in the middle of middle of fall, bring those back to you by the from January, get ready to rock there. Get ready for the competitive superposals on that one. We have run crazy. Staff has done a fabulous job of getting ready. And so tomorrow starts school, we're excited about that. And so I'm very pleased at the work of both campuses, their staffs. If you was able to come up last night, it was truly enjoyable. It was a community event last night. And so I don't know if it's a partner spot on the grounds. And so that was that was really good, so we're looking forward to a great start tomorrow. Getting everybody here and getting them all home safely, that is my job, my my number one goal on first day of school. And to the right house. I let y'all laugh, but that is a big deal to me. And then just update, we've alluded to it all along, but our our community eligibility provision, our C E P does allow our kids to eat free this year, so I'm very excited about that piece right there. One, just for what it's going to do for our families, you know, that's a, you know, as Rusty was saying, it's a people's meal in town, you know, on adults, you know, it's still if you can provide for your kids, you don't have to put something in there, that's great. They want to send lunch, I can, but we're going to encourage everyone to go through the line, get those extra pieces in there because our kids are growing. And, you know, we want them to be be well-fed, we'll take care of, and we're hoping this makes a big difference in the lives of our families.
Has it been you that put it out yet?
Yeah, it went out today.
I was looking for it yesterday, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it came out this afternoon.
Is it posted on the website?
Give me on the website, I haven't looked it up.
So we hit the our magic number on the C E B?
Yeah. Yeah, we were, when I looked at it with Wanda, you know, last time before, we were sitting at about thirty-six percent, something like that. We were about forty, forty-four percent, but when you push out, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how those numbers work, Terry. But the the piece I asked, is it funded? A hundred percent. She said, we believe you are fully funded.
Like I said, I don't mind paying a little bit, but I don't want to come up to the end of the year, you know, and pay a hundred thousand dollars.
And that was the whole point right there, you know?
Out of general funding.
Yes, sir.
I think it's going to be key is we got incentive out of these kids to go through the line.
That and and, you know, our eligibility, you know, us keeping that up.
Yes, sir.
And are are we still required to have to do it for three years now that we're joined in or is it just on?
We're we're in, yeah, we're in for three. Which is good, you understand?
Yeah, I understand, you know, if our numbers fall and remember.
Yeah, we would come out of it. So but honestly, you know, with our just our homeless kids that are that are here, you know, and homeless doesn't necessarily mean what you typically think of homeless, you know what I'm saying? That that's been a lot of ours, you know, we have a lot of people. And that's one thing that our principals are telling me, you know, we got a lot of kids living with grandparents. If they're living with grandparents, they're homeless. And so and so and nine times out of ten, they're homeless on that. And so there's just a lot of provisions there. And again, those families that are in that situation, that's economic hardship. And so if we can help them there, to me, that goes a long way. And so I'm I'm very excited about that piece right there for our.
You all be tracking that, you all kind of give us an idea?
Oh, yeah, every, I mean, there, as Tommy said, every Yeah, they
My reputation.
Every jot and tittle is is noted there.
Well, a couple of weeks, you tell me how it's going.
Well, this is still being used a couple of weeks, wait two months and it's going to have its going.
Yeah, we'll we'll see.
Like you, that's been my scare.
Yeah. Well, you know, like I said, it's against a good good intention, it's there for a good reason, that we maintain our our numbers, you know?
And we're small enough, it don't take much to hit our numbers, but it don't take much to get way off.
And that's in everything, we can say, yeah. And so and the other side of this, and you'll see it, I think, probably next year, you know, where because our numbers have been lower, it does affect some of our S E S stuff, which is, you know, accountability as well. And so I do expect us to remember that 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 waterfall, you know, for an A and a not an economic hardship, you had to be way up here, but you could be anywhere down here and perform where you are, you're solid rock. So I think that's going to help us as well. And so there'll be some other pieces that come out of this, so I'm excited about that.
All good? All right, next up, executive session. We're going to executive session at seven thirty-four P M, discuss personnel for Texas government, come to section five five one oh seventy-four. All right, return to regular session at eight oh eight P M. Next item up, adjourn, we have a motion.
I'm like that.
Motion by Josh. Second by Rusty, all in favor.